Let's call the March 28, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to order. So first order of business is agenda changes. Does anyone have an agenda change? Okay, doesn't sound like any. The only thing I'd ask is, like you said, 9:30 max. Number two, public comments for non-agenda items. Nobody in the audience tonight, so we will move on to item three, Village Area Design Standards. Continue that from last meeting. And for sub-bullet there is summary of positive outcomes from the last meeting.
Yeah, so I sent out essentially the same document that you got at the last meeting, with the first page having my own little summary of the items that got the most votes, six or more anyways, and just a quick encapsulation of those items. And then, the rest of the document looks very similar, because it's the same, as what you looked at last time, but it includes the number of votes. They're still up on the board there. I thought it would be fun for other committees to see it, so I left it up there. Indicating which outcomes got how many votes. So, again, my hope was by talking about these outcomes that you wanted to see happen, that we could get some clarity on the types of design standards that I should be focusing on bringing back to you at a future meeting. So instead of, just to be cheeky, instead of going off and, you know, finding design standards on paint color, or how many dogs each house is supposed to have on its front porch, you're going to tell me, "Well, these are the most important outcomes, and that means, well, I'll spend my time looking for design standards about vibrant and connected green spaces," instead of dogs and paint color. And so that was the first outcome that I highlighted, just in terms of those that received six or more votes. And this was an outcome that both Ralph and Maggie had suggested they were sort of common. They both got a good number of votes. So just to walk through them for the viewing audience, since they're not looking at the document, the seven that I highlighted at the front of this new document was vibrant and connected green spaces within the village area, transforming Route 116 into Heinsberg's Main Street with traffic slowed naturally via design elements. This was an item that both Joe and Jeff had touched on that got a lot of votes. A future village that is the diverse economic core for the town. Residents able to live, work, and shop in the village without having to use motorized vehicles. Organic growth and development with architectural character. The sixth one was energy-efficient construction and renewable energy use. And the last one was this concept of a concentrated retail block. So those are the seven that I thought, when I consolidated, some of them rose to the top. But you can see the actual outcomes and the votes on the subsequent pages. And in my email to you with the packet, you know, I reiterated what Maggie had touched on at the end of the last meeting. Her sort of hit list of focus areas for these design standards, based on what the discussion from last meeting. And Maggie had talked about, "It sounds like there's a lot of interest in having some standards for Route 116, and what happens along it, or what doesn't happen along it." Parking, green spaces, architectural elements. And then, I think afterwards Maggie had said, "And don't forget the building size discussion, because, you know, this all started with, should we have size limits, and how does that work?" So with all that said, that's, the second bullet item on your agenda is creating a shortlist of issue areas to focus on for crafting these new design standards. What are your thoughts? How do you think we're doing in terms of whittling this down a little bit, or synthesizing?
Yeah, how short is a shortlist?
Less than, less than 10 areas that you want design standards on? Preferably less than eight. But it doesn't have to be any particular number. I just want some clarity, as I was telling Ralph and Maggie at Good Times before the meeting, I don't want to go off and half-cocked and bring you back a bunch of design standards, when what the commission is really looking for is a bigger discussion about reworking the zoning districts themselves. Like, turning a zoning district off, or completely eliminating a whole class of uses from one of these zoning districts. That's a different kind of conversation from a design standard conversation. So, shortlist, six to eight issue areas maybe. Maggie, you identified five. I identified seven sort of outcomes. Some of them are related, but, so I'm just looking for some feedback on where you, where you thought the last meeting's conversation was going.
So for me, you raised a good point. I think maybe we need to decide what's the bigger priority is. So we have these design standards that'll kind of help dictate the design, and what we think we want the village core to look like, but do we need to talk on a broader base about growth patterns? And, you know, not necessarily stopping zoning or anything, but you know what I mean? Just defining that, you know, like it's from the inside up, or do we just let it be as it's going to be?
Is that kind of the phasing discussion that we've talked about?
Yeah, but it's not in the list of design standards, so I, I think that's what Alex was, maybe you were kind of touching on.
Well, in part.
But at least it's what sparked the question.
I do think that you've been talking about several disparate elements to this village growth rezoning, right? So you've talked about, "Hey, let's update that official map. That shows where we want future community facilities, and it's out of date. Let's fix that." And I was supposed to do a survey of the community, which I haven't done yet. My apologies. So you've talked about changes to the official map. You've talked about these design standards for when development is proposed, how should it look, how should it function, how should it be constructed? And you've also talked about taking a second look at the density allowances and the bonus structure, because it sounds like some of the bonus allowance, the way that, ways that projects can get density bonuses might not be in tune with what you, these outcomes that you want to see happen, or with reality in some cases. So those are some of the elements you've talked about, and I think the phasing one is another one. So they're all connected, but I think you can talk about them separately and potentially act on one or two of them ahead of the others, right? That was Jeff, your comment from way back was, "Maybe we don't need to make this into one huge proposal. Maybe it can be, let's get some positive design standards in place, so that as these developments that are, you know, happening sooner rather than later come before the DRB, there's clearer expectations as to how they should be designed. And maybe, you know, other elements of these zoning changes could wait until later in the year, or beginning of next year, or something like that." With that said, I am interested in the bigger questions that Jeff was alluding to, because some of these design standards may be specific to some of these districts. We've talked a lot about the Village Northwest District, because it's a big wide open space, and we've talked a little less about the Village Northeast District, which is also, you know, an expansion area, even though NRG is sitting in the middle of it. So, yeah, if there's some part of your phasing thinking that relates back to what the design should look like in these particular districts, it might be good to have that conversation. But I feel Maggie's desire to move forward with actual language for design standards, so I'm ready to go get you some of those. This is sort of your last check before I bring you a palette to choose from.
Well, if we were to just sort of address these seven, you know, the first one, I mean, something, I'll say, I think it's tangible. When it comes to that, both one and two, I think the current swath of green space that sits alongside Route 116 is too skinny to really be something that makes that an inviting place, or a place that can link to other green spaces, you know, within that development, or even other places outside of that development. So I think with regard to one and two, these connections between viable green spaces and the transformation of 116, I think that's sort of a tangible piece for me. I think that swath needs to be bigger. What that dimension actually is, I'm not quite sure. I think it's currently 40 feet?
Right now, the Northern Gateway Area Design Guidelines, which is in 5.22 of the zoning, says, "Rather than placing buildings, sidewalks, driveways directly on Route 116 on that frontage, traditional village design development shall be set back to allow for pedestrian and multi-use paths that are separated from Route 116 and properly landscaped. The idea is to create a green buffer at least 50 feet wide from the edge of the right-of-way along this portion of the Route 116 frontage." So you're saying it wants to be more than 50 feet from the edge of right-of-way?
Certainly something we might examine. What the actual dimension is on.
Right.
Obviously, I didn't scale it right, because I had it at 40 feet. That's, that's one thing.
So maybe we should tackle that? Just pick one? Jump right in?
Well, I sort of leave it, I guess.
And I'll bring those back to you. I don't want to do that tonight. I'll bring you, my thought was, on these seven items, or Maggie's five, or a blending of them, I will bring you, you know, several design standards that address each of these, and you can talk about them once you have something in front of you to debate and wordsmith.
I guess the other one that, not to, you know, that number seven, the concentrated retail block, you know, I think I sort of said this previously. The notion that that retail block is somehow going to coalesce in that Northwest District somewhere in there seems like a remote possibility to me. And I guess I feel like either closer to the existing village area, I mean, I sort of mentioned, you know, where those car dealerships are right now, and even the Obashans, and there's an abandoned house there with a barn in back, and then there's another small house before you get to Patrick Brook. I guess, you know, I don't know. I see that as a more viable potential location. I'm not saying that access is always off 116 there, but just to sort of make sure that, and this is just me, that if that were able to happen, to make sure that that could potentially happen in that location, to make sure that design standards, zoning regs, whatever, I haven't sort of scrutinized that as carefully as I should, but that that can happen there, you know, as a counterpart to what's across the street in certain ways. I mean, those are mostly institutional and manufacturing uses, but especially if one imagines Hannaford actually happening, which seems possible. You know, the sort of concentration, I mean, we're always talking about being able to walk from the post office to other places. So just, I guess all I'm saying is, hey, is that the exact location? Maybe not necessarily, but it could happen there, and that we're not doing anything or writing anything down that doesn't enhance that possibility.
Well, I think that's the conversation that we need to have, and I did hear both you and Jeff last meeting talking about, you know, how likely is it that we can replicate a Bristol or a Virgens? Maybe, maybe we could little, let that topic morph a little bit to include retail size limits, building size limits, footprint that we touched on, as well as stepping back and looking at the map and saying, and this might be where John's exercise comes in, but where realistically do we want to see retail? Where does it make sense for retail to want to be? Where does retail want to be?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that that means we have to disallow it in other districts where we currently allow it, i.e. the Village Northwest, but I think there's a way to specify how it should look in the area where we really want that concentrated, concentrated retail and service establishments to happen. And it sounds like, from what I've been hearing from the commission, is that Commerce Park as a commercial park subdivision is a, would be a great place for that to evolve. And the 116 frontage that's essentially on, you know, one side of that park is, would be a place for that to happen as well. And so, just like we have a Northern Gateway Design Guideline, set of guidelines for that area north of Patrick Brook up to Ballard's Corner along 116, I might suggest, when I come back to you, some, you know, a special sort of overlay for the area that we just talked about. And there might be, there might be special design standards in there for, you know, how the, how the buildings should present themselves, how there could be connections or access or parking arrangements, that sort of thing. That could be specific to that spot.
So does that make sense, to sort of change it and adapt, adapt that one, number seven, a little bit?
Well, I think number seven is the desire to see that happen. The question is, how do you write regs to?
Incentivize.
Yeah, incentivize, allow.
And where?
And where?
Where.
And where, yeah.
I think, I like the idea of having a concentrated retail block in that area you're talking about, and I guess, I think we should work on that. I wonder if we should set that aside for the near future, and in the current time, focus on the areas that we have, you know, that there are, we have a lot proposed for the village expansion districts.
Right.
And we have an opportunity to influence that right now. I guess I feel like, let's work on that and, and take advantage of the opportunity to influence that.
So which ones, which, which of these topics do you think would be good to focus on?
For those areas?
To start out?
Number one.
Why?
And two?
Number one and number five, right?
That's what I was thinking. Architectural character, writing, writing more in terms of, you know, if you, you know, if you want to mandate multi-story, that's the place to do it. If you want to mandate no cookie cutter, that's the place to do it. And, you know, at least to the first level, it seems fairly straightforward. You know, there are nuances that would be harder, but I imagine this is probably a multi-part thing, right? First pass goes to select board, second pass goes to select board, et cetera, so.
Well, then, wouldn't it also be number seven?
I know Ralph said that he thinks it's possibly unlikely. I don't know. Not, I don't have an opinion what, I mean, I just think because it's such an open slate there, northwest and northeast.
That isn't what you want it to happen in a way that would create that synergy, even if we're not sure it would.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know whether it will happen or not, but it seems like it's bearing down on us.
Yeah.
But I like the ideas that you had, too.
Yeah, you're saying what James has just said, and I think there's merit to that.
And personally, I would rather see it closer to the village than up at the north end, which would be nice if we could encourage that, because there's already development there. Just saying.
Other ideas for focusing or being clear about which, which, which of these outcomes or aspects of them you want to see some design standards from?
Well, how much can you do in two weeks?
Oh, yeah. So your next meeting on April 11th, John was hoping to do this exercise that, I was hoping he was going to be here tonight to talk about it a little bit. Maybe he's en route. And also, Ralph had asked for some density numbers, which I have some tonight, but, so I'm thinking it might not be your April 11th meeting, when you get to start digging into these, this palette of design standards, but rather your April?
I thought we moved it to April 12 to go to the watershed.
Well, we need to talk about that, because.
Okay. Either way, I want to be clear.
So Maggie, I'm thinking it'll probably be your second meeting in April that you'll have this conversation follow-up.
I'll also say this, as regards number five. And, you know, maybe I'm myopic. I think things like Joe just mentioned, which is some mandate or situation where, you know, the land is valuable, and to require certain densities, to require a certain number or volume of two-story, whatever the height is, as opposed to one-story sort of pancakey like stuff, I think those are really viable. And there are other things like that, you know, how you front the street.
Yeah.
Public or semi-public spaces like porches, mandating those sorts of things in some fashion, or certainly encouraging them in a, in a. When you get to style conversations, you know, I could show you the same building, friendly in nature, different in style by definition. When you get into that territory, you know, I always remember going to some suburb of New York a long time ago, and really looking carefully at the architecture, and it was cookie cutter, 1910 style, okay? And if that had been done in our time, we would have said cookie cutter. But that neighborhood, over time, it played all the general rules really well. You know, it had a nice porch, the driveway, the garage was set back, but the multiple, and it was superficial, you know? The variation in styles was so sort of absurd on some levels, if you look back at least, that, hey, you know, they're just giving us the same cake with different frosting, you know? And, and I think to go there is really something that I, gets my hackles up, because I think in that particular neighborhood that I saw, it was all the kind of general rules were nicely played by, and the trees. The trees had grown. They were 50, 60, 70 years old. The whole neighborhood was this soft place that was enhanced by all these kind of more general circumstances, not the fact that somebody had said, "Hey, we need three Greek Revival houses, we need two Victorians, we need..." And besides, all those styles live in the past anyway.
Yeah, you know, I think.
Am I making a point, or am I being dogmatic?
No, I mean, you're making a point. I mean, the further you press towards definition, the more difficult it gets, and the less likely you are to, to really, you know, get something you're after. But I think there's a continuum here. You know, I go back, when we built our house, right? It was a custom house, but we really didn't know what we were doing. And, you know, one of the, one of the first days on the lot, the builder hands me a book, right? He kind of, kind of knew sort of what we were going for, but he handed me a book, and it happened to be a book on, on building regulations for Nantucket. All right? So, okay, you know, big book, fairly strict, right? But, you know, some of the things that they were talking about, you know, you don't have to do the whole book, but, you know, some of the things they were talking about are, are, you know, differentiations in areas where you can't easily change. Two of the things I really remember are roof lines, right? So, you know, if, if every roof line is the same, right, it's very hard to change that later, right? But, you know, if you have some amount of hip roof, some amount of, you know, saltbox roof, some amount of, you know, cape, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right, there's differentiation right from the start. You know, in windows was the other thing, you know, different, different window layouts. Again, the more particular you are, right, in trying to, trying to differentiate, the tougher it gets. But I think you can do some things that get you beyond, you know, a designer having basically three or four plans with, you know, it gets to double that by rotating 180 degrees, or flipping, or something like that. So I think, I think that's possible. I think, you know, the multi-story stuff is, is almost mandatory. I think the last thing that people want is a one-story shopping class.
So, to the point, I'm hearing what you said, right? So me, kind of a layman when it comes to that, right? I walk in, I'm like, "Oh, cookie cutter neighborhood." But I hear what you're saying, and when I think about it, I think, I'm not sure who said it last time, but it was about the varying heights.
Heights.
You know what I mean? You had a single-story house next to a two-story house, and it, it broke it up, and it added a little, you know, I'm not, I'm not telling you about the design, but it made it different. So it wasn't like all just, you know, one and a half story split levels, just as far as I can see. You know what I mean? So it had a little, it kind of goes to that, and I don't even know if you have to say, you got to have so many, you know, gambrels and so many, you know, this type and that type of roof. But just something generic like that, to say, you know, "We encourage you to break things up a little." You know, we'd like to break up, but just, I'm thinking more residential right now, but you know what I mean?
Masked.
We're also in a very different situation. Back in 1910, there were quite a number of styles, and you might, sure, you might have had 10 craftsmen along a street, but, you know, this swath of 116 of Heinsberg, as you know, was built over, over 150 years. And it, it was very organic how, how, how the houses were put up. Some are twins. You can see the, the twins from the Meat House and the Goldsmith House. Others are completely unique. And what's going to go up over here is all going to go up in just a matter of years, and they will all come out of the same playbook, the same book of styles they have. And, you know, we, we can see, you know, is it, is it pointless to ask them to, to, for variety? Are, you know, maybe they already, I think they already know that towns are asking for variety, so they do a faux porch here, and a, you know, fake little detail up there, and call it variety. Maybe that's the best we can get? I don't know. I think, you know, going for something more substantial, like window sizes and, and building heights and roof lines, I think that might get us a little more. But that's what, I, it, to me, it feels so artificial to just put up an entire neighborhood in a couple of years. And, and I don't know what the, what the answer is to that. I don't know. And, you know, that's it. Unless, you know, half of them burn down 50 years from now, that's going to be it. So.
Okay, I got good notes on that. Good conversation. I like the enduring features comment.
There's something Ralph mentioned, but I remember particularly in the pictures you showed us last time, trees made all the difference. And to me, that's an essential part of the planning, and it can't be just these quick-growing things that they put over, over here. They need to be more substantial and native. Would be wonderful.
Which means also that you need a place to put them.
Yeah.
You know? And oftentimes, the little street-wide corridors we have are a little skinny and...
Yeah, I will tell you that the book that Julie Campoli helped write, Visualizing Density, and it, she worked with a photographer who took aerial photos of neighborhoods and showed, "Here's a neighborhood with this many units per acre. Here's a neighborhood of the same density. See how they appear, see how they look different from the sky?" And my biggest takeaway from just browsing the book, as opposed to analyzing it thoroughly, was exactly what you said, Barbara, that it's street trees that make all the difference. You can have a lot more density... You can have a lot more density and have it feel. Organic and comfortable and 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 healthy if fifty years from when it was built. There's an actual tree canopy developing versus. Gaps and small spaces and and small trees. And I've been noticing that in the new north end of Burlington neighborhood that I'm. Becoming a part of more recently. That the the sections of streets where the street trees have have done well. Have just a very different feel than the sections of street where there are struggling little birch trees or sections where they. Trees have obviously come down and haven't been replanted and and these are just pure residential neighborhoods that look like they were all put up. Very, you know, very much in the same timeframe. But yeah, I totally agree, I think those street trees are key and we have pretty good landscaping standards in our regs, but we ought to just. Beef them up, you know, do do more.
In terms of of maintenance and because imagine what Obashan Plaza would look like now if. Those trees had actually grown more than five inches in the past twenty years.
I think Paul Wizerak, our tree warden, would say that the most important thing is is the growing medium. So, you know, make, like Ralph said, make those planting belts, make design standards that require those planting belts to be of a certain size. So that those trees have a chance to actually get established and do great things. And and have some standards for planting specifications. For soil composition and you know, what goes in there.
Yeah, if you look at the difference between like, I was actually on the planning commission when Obashan Plaza happened, I. I apologize for that.
We all make our mistakes.
But I I remember the applicants at that time just really, and you know, I understood. Complaining about the fact that we were requiring some trees in the quote parking lot in two modest locations. Those now have a little sewer pipe thing sitting in them without any tree, so far as I know. But, you know, and then you look next to that right now and there's an area that's earmarked where you can't park. It's got like white lines on it or something because it doesn't make sense to park there or something. And if all of that had been captured for a plantable bed, it's a little like the difference, you know, at the elementary school. In that parking lot, those areas are substantial enough that they can actually support a tree, the same is true here, you know, in our town hall parking lot. So I think that's a really important, important thing, yeah. You you the book that Joe mentions, actually, I did a building in Nantucket. It was the sort of anti-Nantucket building, it was a huge skating rink, which was kind of like having a beached whale in your town, you know? And. Yeah, so anyway, it was a big, big building and. The criteria, I think the book, I'm not sure we're talking about the same book, but it was called Design with Nantucket in Mind. It's it's actually a terrific book. That your builder gave you, if if it's the same book. And it's it's one of the most nicely articulated, you know, that really drives you in a very specific direction that says. You shall use clapboard here, period. And the trim on this window will be four and a quarter inches wide and.
Yeah, I'm not saying it go that far, we're not.
No, 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 I'm not even saying that, but I'm just saying it's a great book to sort of look at. Insofar as just carefully articulated design standards. It made us put cedar shingles on the entire. Exterior perimeter of the skating rink that we designed, which in retrospect seemed a little absurd, but you know, I understood. That we were trying to fit and so anyway.
You shall use one of four shades of blue.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was it was that specific and I think it was that important to that community that it was that level of. Coordination in the architecture, so.
A coordination and differentiation, if you walk those blocks, I mean, it feels like a very, you know, heterogeneous. Thing and of course, a lot of it is, a lot of it was, you know, hundreds of years old, but if if you go out from that village, you know, same standards apply and. There's a, you know, there's quite a mix. There are no Levitt towns on Nantucket, not that one could afford, you know?
Yep, so I guess just to turn around a bit, what what do we wanna see it be? You know, so I know we talked a little about it like here, you know, you got the different types of of buildings. And and I'm trying to be cognizant of, you know, someone's gonna design something and we'll let them design it, but how do we? You know, what is it that we want it to look or feel like, you know? Do we even need to do the different heights and the different things or is it just more about greenery and about greenspace? I don't know, just I'm trying to envision like what? What are we trying to say in the regs so that it gets across to the developer that this is what we want it to end up like? For lack of a better term, without getting that specific and giving some freedom for them to design, you know, how do we do that?
Well, let me give you some options, let me.
Okay, you're gonna go get those.
Let me do that, what I wanna do, actually, and this is what I wanted to do on the eleventh. I want you to look at the existing design standards because we keep talking about this as if we don't have any and we actually do have them. So I wanna present those to you on the eleventh, do the exercise John is talking about, and then on the the next meeting, give you some options. And I think those those options, some of which I'm gonna cob from other communities and just adapt and others, maybe I'll dream up. Maybe some of you will have some ideas and send them to me and I'll put them in there too. I think having some actual ideas in front of you will help you have a a conversation about that is what we're looking for or. No, that's not what we want. It's hard to to dream that up from scratch. I think that's why this whole exercise is difficult because we're not downtown Waterbury Village or Nantucket. We don't have. A particular design that needs to be emulated. We have a lot of variety in the village and and so. Trying to come up with standards for the new stuff, there isn't a fixed version that it has to look like. It could look like a lot of things. But if you give me some running room, I'll give you some, I'll give you some actual language to to use as fodder.
Photographs are good.
Okay.
Saying.
Was there anything else? That felt like it was gelling for all of you from last meeting's conversation that you wanna put in my head for that? Exercise of writing some of these standards for you to look at later? If not, I did put a bullet on your agenda of outcomes to avoid. It's always, it's sometimes it's easier to say what you don't want than what it is you exactly you do want.
Oh, you wanna hear some?
Well, if you're ready to go negative, yeah.
I I don't want one sixteen. Especially north of Kenny. To be. One chain retail store after another, one chain. Business after another.
Well, when you say that though, is 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 your concern the the brand of the business that's there? Or is you're concerned how that business is designed on its, the site is designed? Are you talking about, I don't wanna see building with parking around it next to another separate building with parking around it next to? Or are you talking like, I don't wanna see Napa auto parts store next to Dollar General next to.
Right, so so we talked about Dollar General looked about, looked into coming here. Why did they decide not to?
Well, you'd have to ask them that to be sure, but it was explained to them, they were looking at the site just north of Patrick Brook, north of Kenny Drugs. And it was explained to them that our regulations are written such that there has to be pedestrian connectivity. And that they would need to provide that as part of their application. And they said, well, that's that's a difficult thing to do to get across Patrick Brook and I explained to them that. There's a condition on the Heinsberg Center project that they actually provide that connection across Patrick Brook to continue the sidewalk north of Kenny Drugs. It's a condition of their approval that once there's something north to connect to, they have to, they have to provide that. And Dollar General said. How are you gonna make them do that? How are, you know, is our project gonna get held up if it doesn't happen? And I said, it could, yeah, if if that developer is, you know, takes us to court or won't do it, you know, you'll have to do it. In order to make that, make it pedestrian friendly and I think that was. There was uncertainty there that they didn't like and there was a, there was a. Cost issue that they that they weren't happy about.
So what I I guess what I, you know, what I think of when I say that is that Dollar General has its model store. It's a box. I don't know about. The auto parts, but it's it's these. It's like the the corporate, they have their. Their style of building and they just wanna come in and slap that up.
The cheap inexpensive, single-story with a parking lot around it.
Yeah, exactly, and well, they actually, if we're saying two stories, if that's part of our standards and that that's gonna.
Fairly easy one.
Right, right.
Well, that's ultimately where where my question was going. If Dollar General came to town and said, we won't build our normal seven thousand square foot, single-story store with parking lot out front. We'll build a two-story store with apartments above and the parking in the rear. Would you care? Would you, would it still be an outcome to avoid? Cause I think Marie was getting at, how do you, how do you stop that? I don't think you can, we can't, we can't play favorites about.
And I don't think we wouldn't want to. Worried about legal and lawsuits, that just screams issues to me. But for me personally, right, it's like I've always said, I. I don't care if Hannaford's here, I don't care if Dollar General is here, what I care about is what are you putting here? You know, physically.
The building, yeah, and the site.
Right.
So I'm hearing a single-story building. Corporate, corporate design with parking around it, bad.
Bad. But then we pretty much already knew that. Cause that's, yeah.
But then we talked about the design Ralph showed us last time from TJ Boyle. Where you allowed parking in front and then the green space, am I correct?
Right, if that parking was part of a a road, so it was essentially a frontage road with with on-street parking along it.
Which I did, I thought that done that way was acceptable, but.
Okay, so yeah.
What makes me nervous is. You know. Taking a lot of creativity away from way from people I just would like, but. I'm not saying that I wanna see parking in front, that's not what I mean, but. It's very complicated.
So it's it's a good segue on what you just said, I think, so it kinda goes to. The one sixteen part of it and even even further, if you, because it seems like we're talking a lot about Patrick Brook is kind of being a divider between. Downtown and then still kind of the village and then it goes further out. But Ralph, I've seen these from Ralph sent the thing with the, I don't know if you saw his emails, right, with the the streetscapes? And that's kinda what I was thinking of, so so we mentioned, you know, Virgens and Bristol, why those are lovely towns. When I mentioned those, it wasn't about recreating, you know, Bristol here in Heinsberg. It was about a main road coming into a town, slowing down and then going out. What the buildings look like, I expect to be just Heinsberg, not Bristol recreated. But I think that kind of model where you're able to look at, you know, this is, sorry, I know you can't see, but you know what I mean? It's kind of a side shot of, you know, here's the car lane, here's the bike lane, here's some greens, or here's a buffer, here's some greenery, here's a walking lane. I can kind of, for the one sixteen part of it anyway. In my head, say, okay, well, this is kind of what we envisioned maybe to Patrick Brook and then this is what we envisioned beyond that. Maybe that green space goes from twenty feet to fifty feet and. Not really getting into the buildings necessarily or what's there, but it just kinda starts. You know, that's something I know we wanna talk about, so how do you do that? And I think that would be a good. Exercise and I don't know if we're. Traffic savvy enough to have that kind of conversation, but you know what I mean? I think that's kinda what I envisioned for design standards of slowing one sixteen and how it looked was. I can look at something, ah, I get what you're wanting here, you're looking for, you know, us to think about bike lanes and green spaces.
And really, and really softening.
Yeah.
The area around one sixteen, so it is a place that's not just what, you know, it doesn't just have a sidewalk, but it. It's it's green, it's shaded, it's.
Yeah, and I think if we could show something like that and define like, you know, this is kind of, not even kind, this is what we kinda want along that one sixteen to make your buffers. And then the buildings and the, you know, we can get into the regulations, but those are kinda can be. What they are as long as they're two-story and mixed use or whatever we come up with, but I was really focused on the, how do we get that road? Right, so that, cause I, for me, the road, one sixteen road and seeing people walk along that, that's gonna be the key to people wanting to be. You know, cause I've tried to, I don't wanna walk along one sixteen, you know, from like the public house down, it's.
Especially when I've been to the public house.
Right, you know what I mean? So I I'd like to see some of that and start there and then, you know, I guess I I just wanna clarify that I wasn't really saying I wanna to recreate something. It's about how they do that and how can we define that and get into these things, so.
We was talking about bike path along there at one time, a long time ago, I probably remember that, Ralph. But it got complicated even then, they, I think they couldn't ever come up with a good vision. I think we have better ideas now, though.
Yeah.
So I guess it's sort of. Needs to be broken down, you know, like back to what James said, northeast, northwest.
Right, yeah, I do think that whereas right now there are design standards for the overall village growth area, some for the northern gateway. That that will probably want to have some by district.
Yes.
And have some different ones for the different districts. But we'll see, I really gotta write some to see how they'll sort of come together and whether they end up applying most places or just in a in a few. Anything else you're particularly not fond of that? That you think the community, maybe, maybe not you individually, but you think you've heard community members over the years saying. I I don't like this or I don't wanna see that.
So so one I've heard is, and we kinda talked about it, I think already, so maybe it's a moot point, but is the. Discomfort of walking on even some of our newer sidewalks, so if you think along Mechanicsville Road there. So I've walked out, you know, towards the cemetery, if you're walking towards CVU Road. It's okay, it's a nice new sidewalk, really excited to see it come in, but when you walk on that thing, you feel like you're in the middle of traffic and you're gonna die at any moment. And it's just not comfortable, you know what I mean?
There's also no shade, basically from from CVU Road all the way down to Commerce Street, there's, I don't know if there are any trees or very few anyways.
But then once you get on CVU Road, CVU Road alongside the school there, that's comfortable, you don't feel like you're gonna get hit at any moment.
There aren't very many trees on that section either, but it does feel like, cause it's set back so far.
Okay, cause, yeah, it's just, yeah.
That's what everybody was worried about when they talked about the bike path on one sixteen in the northwest was, you know, oh, I don't want, I'll never allow my children to walk there if you do this. Because somebody, something might just hop off of one sixteen and kill them, you know, that type of talk. So people envisioned what you're saying on Mechanicsville. I haven't walked there, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's it's not comfortable.
I think it's very unattractive where the bridge and.
We did the best we could, you know?
I know you did, I really, I'm not wanna criticize it because people worked really hard in twenty-five years to get that and it's great, but I just don't like those papers.
Yeah, but don't don't let me lie to to kind of defend Alex a little bit. Having that sidewalk and that ability now to walk where you couldn't, because I walked it when there was no sidewalk and that was really bad, so it's better. But you know what I mean, it's.
I agree.
You just don't feel comfortable, you know?
But it does create connectivity.
It does create connectivity, which is good and I'll take that over none, but we just should think about that next time we're trying to.
Yep, the more you walk on it, the better it gets, probably. Can you test it?
I'm good for you.
Come on, it's a lot, yeah. So other other negatives. As has been mentioned before, in the northwest. The whole Butler Farms scenario, just having it be a sea of residential. Residential houses, I consider that a nightmare scenario.
Because you want it to have more than just residential uses or you want it to have a different residential pattern? Those are those, those are two different things.
Mixed use.
Yeah, mixed use, I mean, that's. And I think you had made. Yeah, mixed use, so I mean, that's um and I think you had made that comment at some point, Ralph, about uh or may- maybe Alex, who knows, about um you know, variety of sizes of um commercial light industrial for small businesses, like home businesses to expand into, not huge spaces. And then smaller businesses to expand into, so expansion, you know, a variety of um of of sizes. I guess that's, would that be light industrial or considered just commercial, I guess?
Yeah.
Just a mix, yeah.
Use a variety of terms to describe it.
So here's an interesting thought on that, so when I think about what you're saying, I agree with the mixed uses and everything. But when you think about, I don't know if you even call it phasing, but as you grow north, right, up in the Village Northwest, let's say, um I can kind of see, some people would say it should become less dense as it goes north. Or maybe it should stay as dense, but it should stay close to south and grow dense as needed as the town grows, I don't. That's something we need to think about and how do you regulate something like that? Cause it's, you also hit that thing, well, I'm the landowner, so you're telling me I can't build anything here until the town catches up? You know what I mean, so just, how do you do that?
It does seem, no doubt you that, don't you think that when you get further north that everything's bigger, bigger? I mean, the the um health care facility is pretty large, I forgot what the square footage is of it. And I imagine that if they choose to build on the other lot that they now own, that that might be large. And then there across the street is the Jiffy, the Jiffy Mart, which is not small, like really, not small. So I, that's an interesting point you're making, cause it does, it already seems a little larger to begin with, sort of.
Yeah, so the buildings are larger, but I mean, you know, if you think about density and how tucked in those buildings are, like obviously we're kinda looking for that, but do we let the that density kind of, even with bigger buildings, but not quite as packed in? Or do you say, no, we still like our density in that area, but we'd like to pattern it to grow? You know, away from the village center, whether that's north or south, I guess.
The two plies, the haystack and the the village visualization is they've it's denser, closer to one sixteen and then as you go west, yeah, it hurts out and.
Seems like it's natural for it to be that, end up like that.
Okay, so maybe that's, is that the pattern that we wanna, I don't know, I just, maybe we don't have a pattern. I just, I heard that we were hoping that things wouldn't start breaking out up there in the CVU Ballard's, is that Ballard's corner up there?
Yes.
And.
What do you mean breaking?
Well, like, I I was here, we didn't want islands of development, we kinda wanted it to grow out from the center.
But it's already started up there, so we're kind of in a, it's kind of a.
Do you let it continue?
Well, I mean, there's.
But how could you not let people do what they wanna do?
Well, I mean, there's, there's always been something up there, but we've talked about this before with phasing and hey, if if you don't know you're gonna have the sewer and you don't know you're gonna have the water and and you do want a walkable community, you know? Um, you know, that's contiguous, then you have to, you have to put a priority on things that are closer to the village. I mean, and and I really see us in that, you know, in that frame right now, because I haven't heard of any solutions, right, that that are gonna give us the, you know, the potential we need to fill out that whole area. So therefore, I I think you have to prioritize things closer to the existing village.
But can you, ha, and this is for Alex to figure out, but how do you? Cause I I everything I'm hearing says you either incentivize or decentivize that behavior versus saying you must only build.
No, I know, I know, I, you know, I I think that, I think that phasing is a is a recognized zoning tool, right? And and phasing, as far as I'm concerned, can, you know, can encompass not only numbers, but regions.
Yeah, I think Joe's right, I think, you know, our regs talk about today, give the development review board the power to to require phasing. And um I think the regs could be clarified to to talk about what that phasing, how that phasing should be structured. In terms of just what Joe said, both number of units, but also uh location within the project, you know, what what should come first.
That, does that assume it's just one big project, like a Black Rock or?
No, I think it would be true of any size project, so.
Prioritize projects where and when.
The project, if if the whole project isn't gonna happen in one step. Many of the smaller ones will, there's no phasing, it either happens or it doesn't. But with with the larger projects, yeah, you can talk about phasing. Um, I think your question might be, so two things. In in the Haystack Crossing project, the developer is interested in phasing and was working collaboratively with us to decide what was the most appropriate place to do it and and at least right now, is talking about starting on the southern edge and thinks that that makes a lot of sense logically to to grow organically out. The the Bouger property, that is a sort of like an inholding in the middle of all that, is an island. And so I think, I think your question might might be, but well, what would happen if if somebody bought that property and decided they wanted to develop it right now?
Yeah.
You you can't phase it because there's, there's, it's the whole thing is an island, so what do you do in that case? And 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 I can look into that, I don't, I don't know, there there is uh you know, there are some some rights that people have to have to have a reasonable use of their property. Um, so to say, I'm sorry, you have to wait until your neighbor does something and you can, if your neighbor decides never to do something, you will never do anything.
That's what I was kinda getting at, like I I I know we want that, but and then phasing, if you own the whole property, I get it, but it's just, you know, if I'm the hospital and I decide, you know what, I'm gonna put a big bunch of buildings right up here, okay, you can do it, but turn that kinda item.
We're in a uniquely uh advantageous position and have been for a long time in Heinsberg because we have such large parcels that are that are gonna be in for master plan developments. And so they're required to submit a master plan and these discussions are part of those. So uh with the exception of that particular property, um the, which the Bouger's own, uh the bulk of the Village Northwest District is is one property, it's gonna be, there's a master plan for it. Same on the Village Northeast District, same in the Residential One District with the Quinn property. Um, and to some, basically similar in the Residential Two District, which is now being developed uh for by the Norrises. So to some extent, we don't have to worry about that, um but we just need to give clarity to the DRB that when they're talking to these big master plan projects, that, yeah, there's a logical way to phase it and it's um it's to, it's to grow, you know, it from the inside out as opposed to from the outside in.
Yeah, cause even like the Bouger property, you couldn't even say, you need to connect to the rest of the town because they don't own the property to connect through.
Right.
Right?
I mean, but at at the same time, you know, other design standards, you know, if you if you mandate a you know, forty or fifty or whatever it is foot, you know, buffer to one sixteen, yada, yada, yeah, I mean, I mean, that still applies.
Yeah.
Right, in in situations like that, so, yeah, you can't get everything, but you know, I think you can, you know, get the majority done here because of the master planning requirement and, you know, the large parcel and single ownership.
I think it is important to recognize that you, there are nodes of development and connectivity in the existing village area. And that that Bouger property is a really good example of an island in the middle. But the 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 road frontage on either side of UVM Medical is a node of of concentrated development. So if somebody, whether it was UVM, wanted to do something on the corner or on the other side of UVM, there's a small silver parcel there. Or if the property that Jan Blumstrom owns on the east side of one sixteen at CVU Road, if something wanted to happen there, um it, I don't see, I don't personally see that as an island effect. I see that as just a of filling in an existing node, whi- which are connected by our multi-use path on CVU Road and our library and all of that. Um, so I think there is potential to 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 see development happening up in that section, but also seeing it happen in the south part of that, those districts. It's just that, it's just that stuff that would be stranded in the middle that would be really unfortunate uh to see happen.
Okay, so so if we thought about master plans and phasing, okay, I think we kinda covered that. Then is the next most important thing, talking about the road layout and the green buffer zones along one sixteen so that if, you know, you did have a Bouger island, at least that would be there so the future ones would kinda interconnect smoothly. You know what I mean, so you could at least kinda put the puzzle pieces together a little bit, so there's some flow, you know what I mean? Or or even in this case where the Bouger property is sitting right in the middle and they're not doing anything and you kinda got this stuck effect. But you could know what that's gonna look like in the future, once it all someday hopefully comes together.
Yeah, similar with the official map, if there's gonna be a particular road network that the town wants to see happen there, a development pattern that will build itself around that uh skeleton, you know, of infrastructure. We 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 need to make sure that we have that on the official map. And right now, this idea of a frontage road with parking along it that, you know, Marie you said seems like a good idea, it's not on our official map. Um, so we we would, we would need to talk to those landowners, which is um the Bissnet family for Haystack Crossing and Brian and Kathy Bouger about how about how that's gonna work.
Two owners at this this point. Um, what about the other road that's been start, you know, that goes?
There was that.
Yeah, is that shown on the map?
Yes.
But I would kinda say, even then, so we talked about one sixteen, what do we want that road to look like? Cause clearly it's not, I don't see it as quite of a major thoroughfare as one sixteen, but is it two lanes, is it two lanes with some sort of green thing in the middle and how far back?
Right.
You know what I mean, it's kinda like, we can control the buffer zones on the streets and then things around it are gonna grow out and grow, but at least we've got some concept of what we kind of vision again.
Yep, I've I've got those notes down, streetscape design standards, yep.
Am I making sense to you yet? Yeah.
You guys are the experts, huh?
No, you're making sense, a lot of this is just common sense, I think.
Okay.
I'm too burdened by information.
Take it in.
I'll tell you though, right now, you know, that island has uh and that that Bouger island, as you call it, has very little to do with what Black Rock is proposing. There's no suggested, you you don't look at the current Black Rock plan and say, oh, I see exactly how those are gonna tie in in a really nice, you know.
But they do need to tie in somewhat, cause they don't wanna make a road.
They they do, but they don't tie in in a way that I I think is um, you know, has merit. It's it's really just the little Riggs Road across from NRG that kind of swoops across and gives access to that.
You could build all the way around Riggs and that house stays there forever?
That could well be.
Being like out by.
Which is kind of what it looks like now.
South of that little house.
I know the one you mean, yeah. The problem is, in this case, um that Riggs House is sitting on like seven acres. It's not a, it's not a a house sitting on an acre or half an acre, it's it's a big chunk of land. But I think.
Don't know how you get around it though.
Well, I think, I think Ralph's right, I think that as you, as you consider better defining design standards and and sort of the backbone infrastructure in that area, you you need to figure that out. We need to bring the Bougers into this conversation. You know, we keep talking about Black Rock because they're an applicant and they're actively working on it and all that. At some point, we have to bring, we have to reach out and bring the Bougers in and have these conversations with them at the table.
But each time you phase, should you almost have a master plan for that, just in case you can't ever go any farther? You know, almost, how can it stand alone, let's say?
Yeah, yeah, well, I think that's part of the discussion that I that you wanted to see in phasing language was um the ability for each phase to stand on its own if could, you know, forces conspired not to allow the other phases to come around for an an extended period of time or forever. Uh, and that language isn't really fully in the regs right now, so that'd be a good language, I think, to add.
Like if somewhere doesn't become a possibility.
Yeah, or or if.
That's a huge one, I think.
Or or if the, yeah, and the way that that might happen is, let's say, the the EPA deems that the state of Vermont has not adequately uh dealt with the Lake Champlain cleanup plan. And so they come in and implement their own plan, which requires our wastewater facility to discharge at uh half of the new lower amount of phosphorus and suddenly we're done, we can't, you know, it it's a difficult proposition.
Yep.
That's a possibility, it would be unfortunate, but.
Alex, how large is the Bouger Island?
It's about seven or eight acres.
It sounds like the perfect place for a town park, right in the middle.
Well, you know, I I I think, I think what we saw last week was that um that that property, right, made the difference between having a, having an interior road, which you know, present regs you could, you could park against versus having two things that rather look like dead-end parking lots and therefore it was front yard parking and you couldn't do it. I think you want a road. Now, now to do that, I mean, you know, the the Bougers need to, you know, kinda sign on to the vision and, you know, make some moves, but.
Have we ever had any conversations with the Bougers on the plans and what the vision is and how they feel about it?
Brian, Brian went to the village visualization.
The village visualization, he was consulted in in advance of it. He was on the village steering committee when it was first formed.
He just, he just doesn't, he just doesn't know, I mean, whether he can build a store there or not, if he can.
Right.
Yeah, there there are other issues going on with with their family right now, but um but, you know, the bigger one is is this whole Hannaford thing and it's pretty tough for them to make decisions about what to do with this, with that property until that's been resolved. Similar to the Drew family and the the conversations we've been having about their property, you know, on the east side of one sixteen across from the Autobody Shop. Yeah. Okay, so I have a bunch of uh outcomes to avoid and outcomes to shoot for and things to focus on. I'm happy, do you have anything else you wanna put in my head before you move on?
Question about density bonuses?
Yes.
Do they play into all this? Is there a a minimum size, let's say, for example, if they're putting in a green space, that it has to be?
Uh, with how, with, if they're getting a density bonus, do you mean, do they have to put in a green space of a particular size?
The one they choose, does it have to be of a specific size?
No, no, it has to be agreeable to the development review board and the select board. So those two boards get to decide whether the public infrastructure element, whether it's a green space or a fire truck or whatever, is adequate to gain the bonus. So yes, we could put, we could put some more boundaries on that or some more direction on that.
I think that would be helpful.
Way back, didn't we talk about that those really weren't working and maybe we wanna look to
Yes.
changing that?
Yes.
And I've heard talk that they're very difficult to deal with. Nobody, I don't know, they're not.
Some of the bonuses are easy to get and therefore popular.
It's not even about getting them, it's about how you figure it out.
Other, well, yeah, the system is a little, a little arcane, um the way somebody, I don't know who that was, structured it, but um uh the, some of the bonuses are are, you know, difficult to get and therefore we can probably get rid of them and replace them with ones that will accomplish good things, but it'll be simpler and you you know, easier to acquire.
And didn't we also talk about that some of them that are just are given anyway now today, isn't that what you said, Ralph?
In part, yeah.
So.
Yeah, we're incentivizing some things that are just being done by everybody anyway.
So, so yes, separate conversation from the design standards, but I hear what you're saying, Barbara, is that if we're gonna have a density bonus that that grants a bonus for providing a public, a public space, it'd be nice if the regulations had some stipulations about size or uh value or something. And we left it very open back in two thousand nine because we figured it would be a bit of a negotiation and we really didn't know what public spaces or what public infrastructure a development might be able to provide. But when we talk more about that, the density bonus structure, we can, we can get into that.
I'd like to hear less the term pocket park. I mean, I I see their place in goodness, but it seems like the pocket park is the go-to way to get their bonuses in some aspect.
Yeah, park that should have a couple of dayloads.
Oh, we put in a pocket park and then you see the pocket park. Oh, we put in a pocket park, and then you see the pocket park, it's a bench with some shrubs, and they're, you know, they're nice, but it just seems like there's a lot of that going on, you know what I mean?
Especially rural areas, right now in the city.
All right, so I think we need to discuss April eleventh. Is that doable with John not here, or?
Um, well, I, John, Maggie and I met, so John can flesh out his idea, I have a basic sense of what he wants to do, I think he, he would like to, he would like to bring some maps to the meeting, some very basic maps, I have some examples in the back there that I was gonna show him tonight, and basically, you know, lead the board in doing some placement exercises and some drawing exercises of things like, where do we want a park to be, or how do we want a green space to connect to another green space, or in his mind, I think he was also thinking of the map from the town plan that shows building locations, and showing that what exists, and then saying, well, let's, let's have people place, you know, clusters of development, where do we want those to go? So he has a better vision for what can be accomplished with that than I do, but we did talk about it, I myself feel like that exercise would be most valuable for the updates to the official map that need to happen, I think he agreed, but I think he thinks it could also be used beyond just the official map to speak to some of these issues that you're also talking about. In any case, that was what he, that's what he and I discussed, we thought the eleventh, a portion of the meeting on the eleventh might be a decent time to do that. With regard to the Water Matters Workshop that I mentioned last meeting, at the very end, when we were all trying to get out of here, it has been scheduled for the twelfth. It seems like you have enough on your plate that to just drop your meeting and go to that, which we had discussed, might, it might not be the best idea, so I guess, my thought was, and this is up to you, these are your meetings, not mine, it might make sense to try to keep the meeting on the eleventh short, and then, you know, whoever's got time and energy the very next day to go to the Water Matters Workshop, go for it, and if you can't make it, that's fine. I sent the program out today to the municipal family, if you haven't checked your email, you can see what the program actually looks like, I put a couple copies on the table as well, so that was my suggestion, but you tell me what you would like to do.
That sounds good, sounds fine to me.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so move on to minutes. You want to have any comments, changes, additions, subtractions? Things look pretty good to me, very thorough.
You were here, so you don't have to worry about this one, but you made a lot of syrup, right? That's good.
All right, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, pass the minutes. All right, other business?
Have a question?
No.
No? No questions? All right, comment. Are we sponsoring at the April twelfth event, and if so, what are we doing?
You are sponsoring, but I did make it clear to the organizer, Marty Eilich at Lewis Creek, that you had a meeting the night before, and that no one was gonna be volunteering to bake cookies, or, you know, present a poster or anything, it's just sort of, you know, the Planning Commission is interested in this topic and wants the community to hear more about it, and, you know, I'm there to help do introductions, so I'm gonna talk about your past efforts on stormwater a bit, so you're not obligated. With that said, if anybody wants to provide baked goods, desserts are on the, on the program, so I'm sure Marty and company who are organizing would be happy to receive them.
He's looking for volunteers?
No, no, like I said, no one's obligated, so don't worry about it.
All right, any other business? Okay, motion adjourned.
Salute.
All right, sounds like we're adjourned, thank you very much.